Good evening. I apologize for the delay. We just had a couple of matters we wanted to take care of. So we didn't have to go back upstairs afterwards. First, I'm going to call to order the Housing Authority for its meeting. And Linda Haley, you're going to do the roll call.
I'm going to do my ask. Vice Chair Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Ferrey.
Here.
Commissioner Pfeiffer.
Here.
Commissioner Marriott.
Here.
Commissioner Mooreman.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I move to excuse Commissioner Simpson from tonight's housing meeting.
Actually, from the Housing Authority meeting.
Authority, Housing Authority.
All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Thank you. We have the minutes of July 10th, 2023 for the Housing Authority. Any changes? Seeing no requests, they stand approved as presented. I understand there's no one here to make any public comment to the Housing Authority. We have two items, new business. We'll deal with them both together. First is RHA 2304, a resolution authorizing the Arvada Housing Authority to execute a third amendment and enter into an addendum to the first amended and restated agreement of limited partnership of Willow Green LLP and authorizing the corresponding execution of tax exemption certificates. And secondly, we have RHA 2305, a resolution authorizing the Arvada Housing Authority to enter into an addendum to the third amended and restated operating agreement of Sheridan Ridge Town Homes LLC and authorizing the corresponding execution of tax exemption certifications. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kylie Justice. I am here and substitute for Carrie Espinoza, who is at back-to-school night tonight. So for the Housing Authority's consideration tonight, we have two resolutions, which if council approves would help us remain a special limited partner in Willow Green and Sheridan Ridge business entities. Willow Green LLP is the business entity for Willow Green Town Homes, which is a 60-unit property that the Arvada Housing Authority has partnered with since 2004. Sheridan Ridge is a 65-unit property that we have partnered with since 2000, providing those property tax exemptions at both properties. Currently, in both business entities, Archway Investment Corporation is a 99.9% owner and manager of both entities. Archway has partnered with Enterprise Investment in order to get a $16.6 million equity infusion. And as such, they are creating a new joint venture called Sheridan and Willow JV LLC, which will be the 99.9% owner of both of these business entities and our partner if you should choose to pass these two resolutions. Additionally, the addendums update our terms as far as being a special limited partner in both of these entities. Recently, we've done a joint effort to try and standardize our terms of partnership. And so in this case, we would receive $300,000, $150,000 from each business entity upon closing of these two, of this deal. And that essentially accounts for our traditionally charged $75 per unit per year asset management fee. We do normally take that fee and then re-put it into other affordable properties that are looking for a gap or grant financing for their affordable properties. And we do have a lot of those in the pipeline. Essentially, Archway and Enterprise have agreed to pay that fee upfront at closing to cover a period of 10 years. And then after 10 years, that payment will resume at an escalated rate. Or if there's another iteration of the business entity, the terms may be negotiated, renegotiated at that point. There are two members from Archway and Enterprise present. If the council has any questions, but otherwise, the city team recommends approval of both of these resolutions.
Very good. As these are items, is there any member of the public that wants to address us regarding this matter? If not, I'll open it up for city council questions or actions. Ms. Ferrey.
I can make the motion.
You may.
All right. I move that R-H-A-23-04, a resolution authorizing the Arvada Housing Authority to execute a third amendment and enter into an addendum to the first amended and restated agreement of limited partnership of Willow Green LLP and authorizing the corresponding execu- execution of tax exemption certifications be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. And then the second one. Ms. Ferrey, did you want to make the second motion as well? Yes.
I'm still getting used to my new name. Sorry.
So am I.
All right. I move that R-H-A-23-05, a resolution authorizing the Arvada Housing Authority to enter an addendum to the third amended and restated operating agreement of Sheridan Ridge Town Homes LLC and authorize, and authorizing the corresponding execu- execution of tax exemption certifications be approved.
You have problems with executions. Motion for approval. And Ms. Ferrey, if I can get your vote. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an approved absence. I understand there's nothing else to come before the Housing Authority. As such, the Housing Authority is adjourned. And now we get to switch hats. And I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for August 7th, 2023. Call upon Council Member John Marriott.
Thank you. Will you please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Haley, if you'll do the roll call now of us. Again, let's see if anything's changed.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Poten Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Ferrey.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Very good. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Simpson from tonight's business meeting.
Motion to excuse Ms. Simpson. All votes cast. That passes unanimously, six to zero. Ms. Simpson is hereby excused from tonight's proceedings. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of July 10th and July 17th. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Next, we have a public comment on issues not scheduled on our agenda. Public comment portion of our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to come forward, state what's on their mind. We have a three-minute limit during the first go-round of this. Understand that during public comment, it's an opportunity for us to listen to you, hear what's on your mind. It will not be an opportunity for us to get into a debate or necessarily provide answers. If answers are being requested, we'll direct our staff to get back to you with regard to specific questions. But it's your opportunity to tell us what's on your mind. So I'll call Nancy Tardy to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. So I was here, I think probably the first business meeting in July, and I was told that someone from the staff would call me and address my issues, but no one ever called. So the things I'm concerned about are what's happening to my recycling, that I'm on the city program. And I've called Republic and they've told me, no, we don't give any tours. So I want you guys to please twist their arm and let me go on a tour of their facility. I want to see whether or not things are being contaminated and whether or not I should be sorting my glass out because the glass isn't going anywhere or whatever, you know, I just want to know more about it. And then my second concern, which I've had for ages, is that there is no yard waste drop-off facility in the city of Arvada. And other nearby cities do have facilities for that. I don't think we need a yard waste pickup or anything like that. But we, we should definitely be diverting yard waste from the waste stream. And we don't have to recreate the wheel. We can join with other cities who are already doing this, like Westminster. And it doesn't have to be weekly. It could be monthly, but something should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've got your information, so we'll make sure somebody from the team gets back to you. Next, Judy, is it Dane?
Dane.
Good evening.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Judy Dane, and I live in Karamo neighborhood in unincorporated Arvada. I am a member of McIntyre Neighbors United Group. I'm here to make sure the city of Arvada was aware of all four linked segments within the large, heavy industrial project at 5950 McIntyre at the time the city gave approval for the canal relocation referral request. The owner, the developer, and the Farmers Highline Canal have segmented the project into four separate segments. The segments are: one, canal relocation under a grading permit, which changes the drainage and creates more developable land. I have trouble with that word. Two, a new diversion structure and siphon at the inlet to connect the real line channel. Three, a spillway project and outlet improvement to move excess water around Hyatt Lake into Van Biber Creek. And four, build the 500,000-square-foot logistics distribution center. These segments are all linked, and the developer cannot build out the site without the changes to the canal. However, from what I can see, only the first segment requires any real approval by the city of Arvada. Farmers, because they own a really small piece of land in there. Farmers, Highline Canal will do the diversion structure and spillway under the guise of canal maintenance, and the site plan development will no longer involve the city of Arvada piece of property. The changes to the drainage and water quality from this development could have a very negative impact on the city, impact on the city of Arvada. Hyatt Lake, because it's a high-hazard dam, cannot take on more water without the improvements being made. Farmers has agreed to accommodate the owner and developer by making the changes to the canal in exchange for funding some or all of the cost. However, because it is being planned as canal maintenance work, no public details are available for the engineering design or changes being made with these improvements. By segmenting projects, they also do not perform the V cup or any environmental assessment until after they have already started grading soils in this brownfield site. The dirty drainage for this large impermeable trucking center will all be funneled into a small detention pond and then into Hyatt Lake. Water in excess of the current lake elevation will then be diverted through the spillway and into Van Biber. In essence, Hyatt Lake becomes a detention pond for this development. There may be other projects also seeking to drain stormwater into the canal or the lake. These projects are part of the trend to drain and develop land and are not beneficial to the environment. The canal grading permit was conditionally approved by Jeff Cohen. It's now being reviewed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. MNU has asked the Corps to review the entire project since we believe the project was impermissibly segmented under federal code. And this may allow the owner to skirt review on the other segments of the project. We do not know. Oops. Okay.
Yeah, if you'd wrap it up, please.
All right. I'd like to ask the city to rescind approval for the Jeffco Canal relocation permit as soon as possible and take a closer look at the entire project and the water quality and drainage impacts downstream. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And then Lynn Clemens.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Lynn Clemens. I live at 6292 Kilmer Loop, Unit 202. I'm the president of the Westwood Villas HOA. And I'm here on behalf of the 135 unit owners in my community and the 18 HOAs near 5950 McIntyre. Westwood Villas is on the north, northern boundary of the proposed first-class business park, and I put that in quotes, from the developer. And this is, this is being developed on 40 acres of land bordering Hyatt Lake and three residential communities, mine, Ryan Ranch, and Lakes of Westwoods. Although being zoned I-3 light industrial, this does not seem like a light industrial project. It's three buildings, 500,000 square feet of warehouse space, 144 truck bays, and almost 600 car parking spaces. The Texas developer constellation is known for building logistics centers, not first-class business parks. My concern and question to you, where will the trucks go and the cars? 55% will go south, down McIntyre to 58 and 70. 45% as predicted by the traffic, the traffic will go north, past West 63rd Avenue, up to 64th and McIntyre intersection, and possibly north onto Indiana. I've communicated to the city staff, the city manager, the deputy city manager, about West 63rd Avenue intersection, which is where my community is located. This street, east and west of McIntyre, has only one way in and one way out. The city is concerned about pedestrian traffic at this intersection, but a bigger problem is looming. With 144 truck bays and almost 600 parking spaces, the logistics center is going to flood McIntyre with truck and car traffic. Currently, a minor traffic study has been submitted by the developer predicting only 944 trips. Only they do not know what companies will be leasing the spaces. Their study only looked at the intersections at 58th and 60th. I'm asking Arvada to request a major traffic study to include the McInt- conclude McIntyre all the way to 64th and maybe even to Indiana. We know some trucks and cars will go further north. What will happen to West 63rd Avenue? I'm asking that Arvada consider a full traffic light. This will slow down the traffic, the semis and the cars coming down the hill and the blind curve approaching West 63rd Avenue. It may even detract the trucks from going north. The developer keeps saying this is a first-class business park with 500,000 square feet of warehouse space, 42-foot-high tall buildings, and 144 truck bays, and almost 600 spaces. If it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, guess what? It's a duck. Well, this is a big noisy duck. It's a logistics center, and it will affect the traffic, the health, and the safety of all the Arvada residents living nearby.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Steve Howard. I'm a commercial property owner in Old Town, Nevada. And although I've only got three minutes, you may want to give me more time because I've got, I'm not asking for anything. And I've only got some good things to say.
I'm still going to limit you to three minutes. Sorry, Steve.
It was worth a shot. Anyway, I just wanted to thank the city council. You know, we own a lot of property in Old Town, Nevada, a lot of historic property. And in the last several months, there's been a really noticeable reduction in, I don't like to use the word homeless, but a noticeable reduction in, in, you know, problems with vagrants and folks in Old Town, undesirable folks in Old Town. And that's a result, I think, of, of the initiatives of taken by the city council and by the police. And I want you to know it's noticeable, and we appreciate it. That's not, several people said to me, don't say that because they're going to stop doing what they're doing. So I don't want, I don't want to give out those signals. And I don't refer to these people as homeless because I've worked at Jeffco Action. I've seen people that are down in their luck, that don't have a place to live, families. I have great compassion for those folks. But a lot of the folks that are creating the problems in Old Town, I think, as we all know, are a very small, small segment of the homeless population. These are folks with, you know, drug problems and addiction problems and psychological problems and people that are just criminals. These aren't homeless people. But these are people that are really complicating the lives of business owners and just the vibrancy of Old Town, Nevada. And so I just wanted to come and thank you and say, please keep up the good work. Please redouble your efforts. I want to thank the police. It's a very thankless job. As I said many times, it's like being a baseball umpire. You make 100 calls, 99 of them are good and one of them are bad. And boy, do you hear about the bad calls. So that's all I got to say. I just wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation as a business owner and let you know that the actions you've taken have been very noticeable and just keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close that public comment portion and move on. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. We have one item. It's R23072, a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Guide House Inc. for professional services relating to implementation, implementing a replacement enterprise resource planning system in an amount not to exceed $2,565,239 in the first year. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R23-072 be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. We have one resolution. It's R23073, a resolution approving the Old Town, Nevada Entertainment District. And Kylie Justice is going to present this one for us.
Good evening again. As council may recall, back in June of 2022, council passed an ordinance which permitted city council to approve entertainment districts within Arvada. This is our first application for an entertainment district, and it has been submitted by the Business Improvement District. As council will see from the packet, the proposed name of entertainment district is Old Town, Arvada Entertainment District.
That's pretty original. Way to go, Joe.
And the area is less than 100 acres as required by city and state law. It's at 41.5 acres. There are over 20,000 square feet of licensed, already liquor-licensed premises within the area. So it meets all of the requirements. The Business Improvement District also submitted the community survey, which was not required of the application, but you can also consider in this application. One thing to note is that if council does approve this entertainment district, that will not lift open consumption, public consumption, open container laws everywhere within that red district. Rather, it would allow the liquor-licensed establishments there to apply for common consumption area licenses from the Liquor Authority Board here in Arvada. Essentially, it would be a very small area. It has to be closed to motor vehicle traffic. And the businesses that are touching that small area would have to apply as a promotional association to essentially make that a liquor-licensed premises. Those businesses would be responsible for regulating the alcohol within those areas. They'd be responsible for ensuring that. They'd have to show community support. And ultimately, whether or not to issue those licenses would fall within the Liquor Authority Board's discretion. The director of the bid is here. If you have any questions, or I'm happy to answer questions as well. But city staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Open up for council questions and action. Mr. Marriott, you're first. I have two others who have some.
Okay, sounds good. I just would like to reserve making the motion here once all questions are answered.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
So I know when we talked about this, this is a little bit different than, and probably because it's been vetted and gone through a process, but with open consumption, you know, I was always under the impression, and you're correcting that tonight, is that if we created a district, that that open consumption can work within the district. But that's not the case.
No.
So I'm trying to picture like one business has a liquor license currently.
Yes.
They're facing a closed-off street.
Yes.
They can serve, if they have a patio or one of those park patios that we lease them, right?
Mm-hmm.
What is this doing beyond that?
Sure. So thinking about Old Wadsworth where it's been closed off. So essentially, that entire street area could be a liquor-licensed premises, where the licensees would be all of the businesses that have a liquor license that are touching that area.
So they would have one license?
It would have one license for the middle of the street.
Middle street.
So people could walk around with alcohol.
From Tap and Doh to the schoolhouse, anyone that has a current license can allow open containers in just that block?
Right.
So they can't cross the street to the old, you know, surplus or any of those others that are closed off as well? They're just now north of 57th?
Correct. They would have to get a different common consumption area license for the area north of the schoolhouse.
So if there's one up there and there's one down here, is that two, if I can't carry the drink from one to the other?
That's correct. That's how the state law is written.
That's how state law is written. Was it thought that it would be, that these would not be contiguous pieces of land? Is that the thought process? I mean, it just seems weird that we've created a contiguous island here.
Yes. That's a fair point. I don't know exactly what the thought process was when passing the entertainment district statute. But, you know, I think the idea is that the licensees are on the hook for what happens within the premises. And so if they're not touching it, how could they be liable for over-serving or serving someone who is underaged when they can't even see what, like where it is?
But if they're serving in their business and the person leaves to go out to the street?
They're responsible for it.
They're responsible as long as they're, I mean, I'm trying to think of enforcement. This is, I can't ask a business owner to go out there and say, you crossed 57th. No, no, get back here.
Right.
I just think that's.
The promotional association will be responsible for their security and ensuring that they can secure the alcohol within that area.
Do you want to come up here, Joe, and talk?
Absolutely.
Because, because I just see this as another problem and expense to your organization or somebody's.
Yeah, no, thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. 100% agree. This statute has some giant flaws in it from the state level. As you guys will recall, during the COVID-19 crisis, there was an executive order from the governor's office, which allowed Mark Devon at the time to go ahead and issue an order which allowed common consumption. Coming out of that, we heard from our business owners how great that was, right? And we heard from the community how much they loved that. And, and that's reflected in the survey results. So kind of looking at, okay, well, what do we do now? This was the best option moving forward. And not only were we concerned about the two separate entertainment districts, but, or two promotional associations, I should say, but also how does that affect the businesses that are outside of the area? So also in the survey results, if you really dig in, you can see, I believe, businesses who replied who were outside of it and those who were inside those street closure areas of that pedestrian mall. The general sentiment from the business owners outside of the pedestrian zone were, if this is a draw for Old Town, we know we're going to get that leakage. It's all about getting people into the area, and then they will explore and they will see more. Now, going back to your original point here about kind of controlling these premises, Kylie's absolutely right. This is going to come down to the promotional associations and needing to kind of figure out what their control plans are and what the Liquor Advisory Board is going to be comfortable with. At the same time, we're advocating as a bid through DCI and through our legislators to say, there's a giant flaw in this because this legislation was honestly designed for an area that wasn't Old Town. And now we've created something down there that's a little bit different. And I think the idea that, you know, adults are capable of having a libation within a business and then crossing a street, but having a libation on the street and then crossing with that libation is a step too far, is something that doesn't really hold weight. So we're advocating for changes to the entertainment district statute at this point, but currently it exists as it exists.
And I appreciate that. And, you know, there are representatives and senators looking for bills, so you should probably jump on it now.
Yes.
But no, I appreciate that you're going to champion that and try to address it because I just think it's unrealistic to think that we're going to be able to enforce it to perfection or how it was written. I'd be interested in how it further expands, but it would let's, I mean, I know we have state law, but I'll just vocal my opinion. Let's not make it so complicated. It's just not worth it. At the end of the day, I know we have to work within state law, but this is, this is silly. I mean, you're, you know, it's going to be a violation. It doesn't matter who or what. Somebody just thinks that that mall continues into the next. The only other question I have actually for you is, I've heard from some of the businesses when I talk to them about it, is there, how is it handled when they go from one business that serves liquor to another and they bring their drink with them? Are they allowed to enter into another business with a drink? So like Schoolhouse to Tap House, I'm just going to use those two because they're on the same district or whatever you're calling those.
No, they're not allowed to enter. I believe that's correct, right, Kylie?
So they're not allowed to enter into the other with a drink in their hand?
Right. So it depends like what kind of drink they bought. If they bought an already like open glass, like from Tap and Doh, then no, they can't take that to Schoolhouse. If they got it to go.
Plus the cup.
Then they could walk along the open, common consumption area. But then again, if they're actually eating at Schoolhouse, they would have to get a drink there. It's just.
They can't walk in and have a drink and already have a drink in their hand?
Right.
Which I heard that might make some people upset with that happening, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. These are some of the feedback I was getting talking to some of the businesses down there.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have no more questions.
Great. Mr. Mooreman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to follow up with that. If you can help me, Joe, on, with the conversations you've had with businesses that are, they're interested. If you can help me, Joe, on, with the conversations you've had with businesses that are interested in this, what would enforcement look like? What are those conversations been at this point? And can you kind of paint that picture for us to kind of understand better?
Absolutely. I think as we're going down this process here, this is the second step. You guys took the first step when you approved the authorization of entertainment districts. We've talked about what that would look like, and I think a couple of considerations need to be taken into thought here. The first is the cost of that containment, and what does that look like? And how do you make it so you're not choking off areas just so you can go ahead and serve them, right? And so I fully anticipate the first businesses that go about this, and I fully imagine they'll have the administrative support and staff support of the bid as they figure this out, is really going to have to work with the city, with legal, to say, like, hey, you know, where are we at here? Is it, do we want to have a rope? Is it fencing? I can point to other, the, one example that gets pointed out is a city that's done this really, really successfully is Greeley. But Greeley does it as a special event, meaning it happens on a Friday night in the summer, and they just kind of fence everything off, and then there's benefit. And I think what we're exploring is something that's a little bit different and probably a little bold as far as what cities have done. So I think we're going to have to just work with staff and legal and the city clerk's office and all these people to go, like, okay, how do we do this, right? Because it probably will involve some additional staff, and it will involve a containment, you know, kind of system and a lot of signage and a lot of education on the part of the business owners, but I don't know exactly what that looks like yet.
Thank you. And I guess the follow-up to the city team is, and I know in the memo, we have the section about financial impacts, but what are we anticipating, like, for our police if we do have an entertainment district? Are we going to need to have a greater police presence and what that impact will be on our police department?
I don't have details as far as what the impact will be, but I know it's something that we'll watch and measure, working with the chief and others that are in Old Town regularly.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Hey, Joe, when you go through this, two things, then, while I have you, I might as bring them both up. One is, when you do your annual report with us, and I like to know your journey through this experience, and if that could be part of your follow-up with us, as part of your report of how this is going and what works and doesn't, I think it helps us be more informed when we're discussing policies and advocacy and concerns. So if you don't mind adding that to just part of your report of your progress.
Absolutely.
And the second thing is how you're doing with recycling. So if you can add that in there as well, then we would have a great report.
We would definitely include that. We will include that in the report as well, absolutely.
Okay, yeah. So it's just, these are kind of, these are big changes and big impacts, and I want to make sure it's on your radar to present to us when you do, you know, read out to us.
100%, and if there's any things you guys ever want to see in the annual report or any clarification, I'm happy to come before council.
Very good. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R 23-073, a resolution approving the Old Town, Nevada Entertainment District be approved. And I want to make just a quick comment. I want to compliment Joe and our team for navigating this. Best way to think about this is think about a festival, but a festival that isn't a one-off. It could be a regular event, but the security arrangements have to be the same. And while there's lots of difficulties with this, particularly 57th, where it goes through, where people can't carry drinks from one side to the other, even if two separate ones were set up, it's not perfect, this is a good start. And I think, you know, along with this, this is probably a really good project for some of our state representatives to take a good look at the state law and try to propose some things that make this work. COVID was an interesting experiment where we were able to, through emergency powers, just do this, and it appeared to me to be completely successful for the businesses involved, and to my knowledge, caused no problems. I don't believe the police had any problems. I don't believe the businesses had any problems. I think it was value-added for the citizens. So I think, you know, this is the only course of action to kind of get there, and so I compliment you guys for taking this course of action, but this is not the final step. This is an interim step along the way, and I think in the future, we'll see more and better as far as this goes. So with that, I will, of course, be voting yes.
Can I, or somebody comment for each other to vote?
Of course.
Sorry, I didn't do that right. You know, I've been an advocate since when I used to have the toy store to down below the hill by the railroad tracks, closing off the roads, and I thought it would never happen and make a pedestrian safe environment. And then to further it to where we're going now, I'm absolutely supportive of the direction you're taking Old Town and support all the businesses. I think that success is its popularity, right? And there's good and bad. Sometimes you get there and it's, like, so packed, you can't really, there's parking. I don't know, I've been in the parking garage and it's been full, so I've been surprised. But I'm supportive of this, and this is great. This is taking it to the next level, and you're definitely making Old Town just more of a good, well-rounded experience. You know, I reflect back when, you know, Scrumptious, I was there right before Scrumptious, and it was just really us two, and there was not much more but antique stores and floral shops, and that was it. Now look at where it's gone. So keep elevating it and doing what's right. That makes our citizens happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. That, did I, yes, all votes cast, displayed. That passes six to zero with Ms. Simpson being excused absence. Now, get the state law figured out a little bit better, because I think we're Exhibit A for what the problem is with the existing version, but this is the next best solution for now. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Portim, can you read the lengthy first readings for tonight?
Yes, I will, Your Honor. Thank you. I move the Council Bill 23-020, an ordinance repealing and reacting Section 1-5, general penalty, continuing violations of Chapter 1, general provisions, provisions of the Arvada City Code, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for October 20, I'm sorry, August 21st, 2023, at 6:15 p.m.
Motion for approval on first reading. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. Thank you. Move on to our public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 23019, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and among Apex Park and Recreation District, Jefferson County School District R1, JCSD, and the City of Arvada for JCSD's priority use of the George J. Meyer Swimming Center replacement facility. And the presenter on this is going to be Anessa James. Let me begin and make it abundantly clear. We've had a number of people come to us with regard to the name of this replacement facility. That is not a decision we'll be making tonight. There'll be a timeframe for when that decision is made, but that's not what's before us on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dr. James.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Arvada is the owner of the property located at 7900 Car Drive, Arvada, Colorado, known as the George J. Meyer Swimming Center or Meyer's Pool. Meyer's Pool is operated by Apex Park and Recreation District and used by Arvada, Apex, and the Jefferson County School District R1. The Meyer's Pool is nearing the end of its useful life, which prompted the parties to enter together to construct a replacement facility. On November 4th, 2021, the parties entered into an intergovernmental agreement for the Meyer's Pool replacement project, known as the 2021 IGA, to cooperate in the financing, design, construction, and operation of a replacement aquatics facility. Pursuant to the 2021 IGA, Jefferson County School District agreed to finance 50% of the facility cost in consideration for an equity interest in the use of the facility and a waiver from program fees, which the parties agreed to memorialize in writing. The parties now desire to memorialize Jefferson County School District's equity interest in the use of the facility and waiver of program fees consistent with the terms of the 2021 IGA and lease/purchase agreement. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve CB 23-019, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and among Apex Park and Recreation District, Jefferson County School District R1, and the City of Arvada for Jefferson County School District's priority use of the George J. Meyer Swimming Center replacement facility.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or actions. Mr. Marriott, you're first.
So I don't have any questions, and I would like to make a motion...
You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. I move that CB 23-019, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and among Apex Park and Recreation District, Jefferson County School District R1, JCSD, and the City of Arvada for JCSD's priority use of the George J. Meyer Swimming Center replacement facility, be approved on final reading, numbered 4852, and ordered published by title only. And I'd like to make a quick comment. You know, I'm really proud of this collaboration that the city is doing here. These facilities are very expensive. They're of high value for our community as well, and it only makes sense to collaborate with the biggest user, which would be Jefferson County Public Schools, and the Recreation District, who has the expertise in managing a facility like this. And I think we've got a great partnership going here, and I think it's wholly appropriate for the school district as the 50% equity partner in this facility to also get use of it in this manner. So for those reasons, I will certainly be voting yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo some of that as well. I think the, what I appreciate is all of the staffs and the teams, both with the Jefferson County School District, the city, and Apex Parks and Rec, for the thoughtful discussions that went on for years and years and years. This was not an easy task to get to this point. Honestly, I didn't know if I would still be elected to get to this point, where we're actually, like, seeing more and more contracts that, showing the progress. But I just want to thank the teams for finally getting together, having thoughtful discussions, and getting to a happy place and making this a reality for our community for another, hopefully, 50 years, but we'll see what we get out of it, and I appreciate our partners all stepped up and helped out as well.
All votes are cast. Yeah, I fully support this project. You know me, I preach partnerships, and this is an example of a perfect one, and I'm thrilled that the replacement facility is going to be built at the current location, because we have obligations to our entire community, and this was an important asset on the east side and needs to stay on the east side. That passes six to zero. Ms. Simpson being an excused absence. That concludes our public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to address city council during public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion. Any reports from city council? Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. One is to respond, if I may, to the public comment about recycling. We have had a conversation about this at the Sustainability Advisory Committee in our last meeting, and I know the conversation was about making a request for a tour to be scheduled. So I'm assuming staff is looking into that. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so we'll look for a follow-up. Thank you. And then the only second announcement that I have is that I'll be having my monthly coffee chat at Sweet Bloom at 77th and Wadsworth on August 25th from 2:00 to 4:00, and invite anyone to come, and we can talk about what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Well, I thought Randy was going to say something, but we both judged, I don't know, did anyone else judge? We judged at the car show for the fire district last Sunday, and...
Did you get bribed, or?
No, I got bribed to put my car in, so I got to put it in.
Oh, but it was disqualified.
Well, yeah, of course. I didn't want to. I donated the money instead to the district. But I just really appreciate what they do out there. It's a well-oiled machine. It was fun. The kids, the food, you know, I think that event gets bigger and bigger. If I remember right, it was the one at the Arvada Center originally, and then we had some change there and moved it out to Stinger. What I wanted to highlight is, you know, that event is another partnership with our city staff, with the parks team, you know, to, you know, allow some of the turf to be used for the cars. And I know that's hard. It's hard for parks people, you know, to, don't ruin the grass, but they respect that. And when I was out there, they were very strict about it, and everyone respected that turf, and I appreciate that partnership because I also found out out there that we spend a lot of time out there helping prepping a small event like that. Even though it's 200 cars, it's still a big lift on our team, and it's another good use of one of our facilities. So I wanted to thank my peer here to help out and do some judging. My kids helped me, so they know more about cars than I do, so that really worked. A lot of arguments, though, between the two of them, my twins, not me, about which ones should we vote for, but it was a great little event it did. I'm impressed with it, so I just want to thank Randy being there, too.
Good. Ms. Frey, do you have an announcement or just...
Yes, I'm still pregnant. But this is going to be my last time on council before my maternity leave, so I just wanted to thank everyone for the support. I'll be out for about a month, and all emails can go to these guys, so thank you.
We wish you good health and happiness with your little bundle of joy that will be here soon. Ms. Gillis, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not, just wishing you well, Councilmember Frey, and thank you, council.
Very good. Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. Please stand adjourned.